Gracias.
Gracias. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired as noted on our screen if anybody needs them. And we, that brings us to introductions, proclamations, presentations and/or recognitions. Are there any to make for tonight?
Yes, there is. We're very happy tonight to welcome our incoming Monroe Elementary School Principal Celeste Darga is with us this evening. Celeste's previous assignment, she was an assistant principal at Galita Valley Junior High School. She supervised special education and the English learner programs. And she's also well versed in our gate and honors programs throughout our district. She has been a teacher in the elementary district for 18 years, taught at Cleveland, Harding and Washington. And Celeste was named the 2005-06 Santa Barbara County Teacher of the Year. And in 2009, the honors continued as she was one of nine teachers selected by the County Office of Education and Partners in Education for the new education technology ambassador program. She's what we call in our business, a teacher's teacher. She was a reading teacher and a reading trainer in California for both classroom teachers and school site administrators. She's taught a curriculum and instruction course of teacher education at UC Santa Barbara. She was one of our leaders in the elementary school district report card revision committee. She's been a leader for a long time in our English language advisory committee material selection process. And with that, I'd like to introduce Celeste Darga, our new principal at Monroe Elementary School. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Wow, I've been really busy. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board. I am deeply honored and very excited to be serving as the new principal at Monroe School. Over the summer, I have been privileged with the opportunity to meet with some of the staff members, some of the parents, the students, PTA members and the executive committee. And I'm proud to say it's been a very positive experience and also very welcoming from the community. It's Monroe School is a great school. I'm very, very excited to be there. I am also very much looking forward to and prepared to lead the Monroe staff in identifying what our strengths are, building upon those strengths and setting goals as we prepare for the adoption of the common core standards and also in meeting the needs of all of our learners. In addition, I have met with Dr. Cash and my colleagues at the other sites. And again, I'm very proud and honored to be working with such an esteemed group of professionals. I'm really excited and looking forward to a great year of collaboration together. I also welcome you, the board, to please come and visit. And I really look forward to showing and sharing with you the great things that are going on at Monroe School. Again, thank you for this opportunity and I'm very excited. Gomastanks.
Thank you, Ms. Darga. We just want to say we are very happy to welcome you as well. We're so excited to have such a wonderful crop of new principals coming into a number of positions this year. And we look forward to really exciting things happening at our school. So I'm sure Monroe is very happy to have you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all at the campus. Thank you. Congratulations, boss. Thank you.
Well, I would like to also give you a quick T-DAP update. As we all know, that students in grades seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12 are going to need their T-DAP booster. And we have approximately 62% have completed it so far. So we have a ways to go. We will send out tonight, I believe, a message to all of those students, families who have not yet gotten their T-DAP booster, reminding them of that need to do so and also advising them that there will be a free T-DAP clinic this Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Franklin Community Center. In addition to that, Vons, in working with our district, has agreed to offer two clinics on August 18th. One at San Marcos High School from 3:00 to 5:00 and one at Santa Barbara Junior High School from 6:00 to 7:30. Unfortunately, those won't be free. They'll cost a little less than $50 for it. But that's an essential vaccination order for students to not only come to school safe, but to be safe for other students in our schools. So we're working really hard to ensure that we get 100%. We're reminding families that they won't get their fall schedules or their classes until they have completed all of the registration process, which now includes the T-DAP booster. So our year-round schools started, as you all know, on August 25th. And, I mean, have started. And the rest of our student schools will start on August 25th. So we're looking forward to a great start. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Was that inclusive of your superintendent's report or do you have an additional report to make?
That is, that's it.
Okay, great. So then we will move on to board comments and correspondence. Are there any comments or correspondence from the board? Not at this time, okay?
I'll just-
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. -- Mr. Herron?
I'll just make one comment. I did attend the media day that the district put on. And number one, I was very happy to be invited and attend that. But I'd like to thank the media. Very well attended and very well reported in the paper. Very complete documentation in the paper. So it was a very positive meeting, very positive discussion. Dr. Cash hit on some very key points for the future regarding our children, our staff, our families. All very right to the point, so I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herron. That brings us to announcement of closed session action. And this evening, we have no, we took no reportable action in closed session. So we now get, come to public comments.
Thank you. We have, a number of these public comments are all related to the consent agenda.
Okay.
Did you want to take them now or wait and see if something is pulled and then?
Well, I think we can probably go ahead and take them now.
Okay, okay, fine. All right, we have Colleen Moriarty, followed by Ralph Waterhouse, followed by David Shapiro.
Thank you, ma'am, members of the board. My name's Colleen Moriarty. I'm the league director of the Santa Barbara Women's Soccer Organization and have been for several years. I'm also a player and have been since 1990 here locally. I'm here representing more than 300 local women who regularly, excuse me, regularly utilize the fields at La Colina Junior High and Lacoumbre Junior High School. And we're welcoming your approval of the agenda item D-22 in order to minimize liability and provide usable, safe, playable soccer fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Waterhouse, followed by David Shapiro, followed by Billy Gallagher.
Hi, I'm Ralph Waterhouse. I'm representing Santa Barbara AYSO, American Youth Soccer. We have 3,000 children play soccer in Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara area, that is Galita and Santa Barbara. Approximately 200 use the facilities in Santa Barbara School District, the two fields that we're talking about. And the use of pesticide, while it's not a nice thing, I think it's essential to actually make the fields safer for children to play, prevent broken ankles, to prevent strained ligaments and all that type of thing. So AYSO strongly recommends that you approve that motion. Thank you.
Thank you. David Shapiro, followed by Billy Gallagher. Okay, because you fill that one for D-23 and one for E-5.
Right, so I was trying to, so I can speak before you guys.
This is the time to speak to any item that's on the consent agenda, which is D-23.
D-23 was the portable library?
Portable library, correct.
Okay. Well, I'm David Shapiro, representing Parents for Excellence in Public School. And we're, first of all, want to thank Dr. Cash for making great strides in addressing the indoor air quality problem. And it's a whole new approach and we're very appreciative and want to first and foremost state that. We just want to raise some potential issues with this library. Remember the 2004 California Portable Classroom Study that we've spent a great deal of time introducing to board and the previous district administration to outline some of the potential problems with more permanent buildings? And we just have to keep those in mind as we rent yet another portable. We also want to keep in mind that any, as we've pointed out in our expert, our three experts that have interpreted Panacea's results would attest to, any books that have been placed in the current library that has been found to carry toxigenic mold with themselves have to be considered contaminated. And the books would have to either be specifically and professionally remediated or replaced. If they're put into another library, they'll contaminate that library. And along those lines, carpet is particularly poor choice for flooring if there is going to be any risk of new contamination. Carpet tends to harbor both mold spores and mycotoxins. And we'd recommend strongly a hard surface floor be used instead. And I saw one of the items was to pay for new carpeting. Carpet also offgasses. There's formaldehyde-free carpet, but there's other VOCs besides formaldehyde, formaldehyde being only one of several VOCs. So we don't recommend the use of carpet. We recommend cautious use of yet another temporary portable relocatable structure. And we urge great caution regarding the use of books that have been potentially contaminated in the current library. Thank you.
Thank you. Billy Gallagher?
How you doing? I'm here to represent Santa Barbara Soccer Club. I'm their executive director, although I don't look like it right now. I'm straight off the coaching field because I coach there as well. Here to support the use of pesticides, La Colina Field, basically because it's dangerous for the kids right now. We've had kids roll ankles, break arms, et cetera, et cetera. Santa Barbara Soccer Club has 500 players and families within the organization. We're coaching athletes to play at the highest level of the game in youth soccer in Southern California. We have players that are representing Santa Barbara in the national level and the U.S. National Team, et cetera. And we just require quality facilities for those players. La Colina is a necessity because it has lights. Trying to find a facility with lights in Santa Barbara is extremely tough. La Colina has them, but it doesn't have the surface. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing, a tough thing, and I know budgets are tight. But it's genuinely the safety of the kids and it's pride for Santa Barbara and the people who represent Santa Barbara and taking pride in the appearance of Santa Barbara and what we can offer our youth. So I hope you guys support this as much as we want to see it supported. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Then that brings us to item C5, acceptance of donations.
I will move to accept those donations with appreciation. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Once again, we want to thank the public for their generosity to our schools. That brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to pull?
I would like to pull, just the, I want to have a quick comment on the minutes on D1. And we might be able to do that first.
Right, I needed to pull that one too. Okay?
I'd like to pull item D14.
Okay, item D1, item D14, are there any others? Mr. Herron?
D-21, D-22, D-23 and D-27.
Okay, so we have item D1, D14, and then 21 through 23 and 27 pulled. Do I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
So moved to pass the remainder of the consent agenda. Second?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. For members of the audience, we will return to those pulled consent agenda items at the end of our agenda. And Ms. Deacon, since we are going to be coming back to all of those, I think we'll just hold number one. Okay? Okay, so then that moves us on to our action agenda. Item E1, approve exclusive right to lease listing agreement with Hayes Commercial Group for Parma's Children's Center. Mr. Smith, I know you are going to be introducing this item?
Yeah, I can introduce it, thank you.
Thank you.
As the board will recall, on June 14th, Debbie Badger, our Director of Child Development and After School Services? Is that her title? After School Services? After School Programs made a presentation to the board where she described that the Parma Center, Children's Center would be, in fact, be closed on August 23rd due to state budget cuts. So that left us with the dilemma of what to do with the facility. And rather than mothball it and potentially have it come a liability, we'd like to explore the possibility of leasing it and potentially generating some lease income that could assist the general fund. So since staff neither has time or in-house expertise to market the facility, we'd like to engage the services of a broker to both market and help us negotiate a lease with a prospective tenant. So what you have in front of you is an agreement to do just that. And we'd ask for your approval. You can see the commission's contingent on a successful lease. We've used similar services in the past when we rented out a portion of the Ortega side of this building to Antioch. The firm that we're using here, Hayes, is actually a spinoff from Pacifica. It's actually the same gentleman we used the last time. So we were very satisfied with his performance at that time, so we went back to him. He put together a proposal and we're asking for your approval at this time. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Smith?
I will move for approval of E1.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, did we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye? Aye, opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, thank you very much. Item E2, approval of the 2011-2012 Health and Welfare Benefits as recommended by the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Insurance Committee.
As the board knows, we utilize a joint labor management committee to utilize, at first was the services of a broker to go out and purchase commercial insurance. Now that we're with a self-insured joint powers authority, we're in a little bit different situation, but we do discuss things like plan design and things of that nature. Actually, the renewals came in much lower than the last three years, so we're really happy to see that. But nobody's ever happy with any kind of increase. So we met jointly with both representatives of SBT and CSCE. This is what we've come up with. It's kind of a perfunctory item that we bring to the board every year, but we need you to approve it. And we're asking you to approve it at this point. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if there are questions about it.
Are there any questions? Ms. Deacon?
Just for the public, maybe you could clarify how this will impact employees?
Well, it will impact employees, though we'll be more out-of-pocket cost because we have a cap. And the way our benefit package is structured is that we pick up the first 1% above what we paid last year and then the rest becomes out-of-pocket cost to the employee. And that includes both labor and management.
I guess there was never any hope it would be any less.
It never goes down.
No, no.
I mean, I've been doing this for, I don't know how many years, I've never seen it go down. I've seen it go flat before, but I've never seen it go down.
And it used to increase at a much lower, at a much slower rate.
Yeah, and the real issue with health increases is that, you know, and I'm going to sound like Lane here. It, you know, erodes purchasing power, so basically, you know, you're taking a pay cut. That's what's going on, so, but there's not the ability to pay for us to pick up. We can't keep pace with the rapidly escalating cost of health and welfare.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, two questions. What is, how does $101,000-plus dollars? What's the reason for that cost? What, how is that allocated out?
Because we, if you have a benefit cap, and let's say, I don't know what it is off the top of my head. I want to say it's like $7,800 for medical. We pick up the first 1% of the increase. So if there's a 7% increase times $7,800, we actually pick up the first 1% of that increase. So when you multiply that times all the affected FTEs, it's $100,000 because those FTEs or full-time equivalents are funded both with unrestricted and categorical funds.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Smith, do we have, do you have a sense of how much of this is coming out of the general and how much is covered by categorical?
It's about, you know, I'm just going to give you a rule of thumb. And it's changed a little bit because of the flexibility, but our allocation's about a 70-30. 70% unrestricted general fund, 30% restricted, both state and federal categoricals. It's probably a little bit less than that because of the flexibility, the tier-three flexibility, but it's pretty similar. I think the other thing too that's important in this is, one of the things we did agree to do is that we moved off, which I believe was an inferior dental plan, and we moved over to Delta Dental, which has an extremely large network and is much better than the Anthem or old Blue Cross Dental.
Ms. Parker, did you have a question? No?
No, but I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the 2011-12 Health and Welfare Benefits as recommended by the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Insurance Committee.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, okay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, item E3, approval of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's response to the grand jury report. Where is the truancy program in Santa Barbara County? This is, it's a good question. And Mr. Sumter, you'll help us identify the answer?
Yeah, then I'm going to market it.
Okay.
This item here contains the response, or the proposed response to the civil grand jury's report dated in May of 2011. You mentioned the title of that report in your introduction. And as a result of that report, different agencies, including Santa Barbara Unified School District, is required to provide a response to different parts of that report and to do so for us, districts, school districts anyway, within 90 days. We did receive the report on June 13th, excuse me, so we are within that timeframe still to have discussion tonight and try to find if you're satisfied with the way the report is written or if you have any questions or additional responses you'd like to add to that. This is a fairly consistent, in terms of comparison with what I've seen from some other districts, a consistent response to the report the civil grand jury provided.
Well, I was just wondering, because a number of the recommendations, and even in our response, we reference those, basically call upon the county to develop some sort of countywide, or the county school's office to develop some sort of countywide response. Do you know what the status of that is or if the county head office is it?
I do not know. No, I do not. There were, like I said, and you can see those in the report, only specific recommendations required of each agency to respond to. I do not know what their status is.
Okay. Board members? Ms. Parker?
I just had a quick question because the county grand jury's report referenced the truancy rate averages, but just for the entire county. And I would like to know how our truancy rates compare to what is going on countywide.
Well, we have begun to look at those numbers. There is some discussion about what's been reported to the state and can be seen on the Data Quest website. We're still trying to iron out why there are some jumps in numbers at times when there aren't in other years. And some of that depends on different elements that may play into that reporting process. You know, people doing the reporting, how it's documented and totaling and that sort of thing. So I'm a little uncomfortable giving any exact numbers at this point until we can iron some of that out, but we are in the process of that. And I would be happy to deliver that information to you as soon as we have something that I feel fairly solid with.
Maybe we could get that in a board brief?
Absolutely.
Mr. Herron?
Yes, I emailed Mr. Sumter. The very last response, I guess I think it, personally, I think it might be a little harsh, where it says the implementation of this recommendation would not be implemented because it is not reasonable relating to whether we should help fund a truancy program. And I go back to the very first paragraph. It says that we agree that it was a successful program in containing the level of truancy and that there needs to be a way to fund the effective truancy program. And I guess, I don't know what success would relate to or equate to, but Mr. Smith, if we reduced, if because of the program, we reduced truancy by 50 people, 50 students. We got 50 more students because of a good truancy program. And if that was, if that was determined a successful program, is my calculation right that that would bring us $33.84 per day approximately?
It's whatever was in the last budget. I was going to guess 35, but if that's what you pulled out of the adopted budget, then that's what it would be times-
Times 182 days.
You probably would not have 182 days because you're not going to have 100% attendance. So I'd take about .96 of that.
Okay.
I'm splitting hairs with you.
Yeah, that equates to some $300,000. And I wasn't on the board when we voted, I guess, not to help fund that program when the attorney asked us to. But some of you were, and I think the number I remember during those discussions was like $80,000. So if there was a program that cost us $80,000 that we could support, that would bring us $300,000, it doesn't seem unreasonable. And so I guess I would, I would like to see the last response a little more, bit more proactive that, hey, if we can get a successful program and if it works and if it can be a reasonable cost, we would support it because we agree that it's a successful program. Rather than say it's carte blanche unreasonable, because I think we would look, you know, it's not unreasonable in the termination of what I just got through going through. That's just my thoughts.
Ms. Deacon?
Following up on that, would that cost be if all the other districts in the county participated? And I'm wondering how they responded to this because the recommendation was that each district provide a proportional share.
Right, and in terms of what responses I did have access to or did get feedback from, it was similar to this. And I'm not sure if I'm doing my math wrong, but to use 96.96 of that amount, would that be accurate though considering that we would not necessarily get 96% out of those students who have been gone through this process?
Yeah, I mean, if you looked at basically the attendance factor of like a community school, you'd probably be down about .70. But I'm also complicating this by the fact that if we're catapulted back into basic aid, that's another issue. Juxtapositioned against the fact that probably the lion's share of other districts, at least in the South Coast, are basic aid and are not beholden to state aid, so why would they want to participate?
My point was, if they all did, and if a good district-wide or South County program was established, and if we agree it was successful, I don't know what, if we say we agree it's successful, I'm not sure what the basis of that is. You know, I don't know, you know, if we don't know what that, if we make that statement and don't what it means, I keep, that's another problem. And if we agree that there needs to be a way to fund it, so we agree, hey, yeah, let's fund it, but we don't want to do it. It's unreasonable to ask us to do it. I think that's just not a palatable answer. If there was a way to judge that as, hey, we're happy to be part of a team player. If you can develop a program that makes sense, is cost-effective, produces results, we're happy to be a part of it.
Mr. Herron, would you, would you feel more comfortable if we, if we change the language to say that it's not feasible at this time as opposed to not reasonable?
Yeah, I think not reasonable is what I'm going.
Okay. Is that?
So, may I ask, Mrs. Cordero, so the last line would be, "The implement, the implementation of this recommendation will, will not be implemented." Hmm. Um, how about we switch that all to, "This recommendation will not be implemented at this time because it is not feasible?"
Uh-huh. And we probably wanna change that up in the sentence right above it, too. It is, uh, not feasible to recommend, or, you know, that school districts redirect, so that?
If we do that, then perhaps we don't even need the last sentence at all.
Yeah, we may not need the, we might just be able to say, "Therefore, this recommendation will not be implemented at this time."
There, there's a certain symmetry in how they respond to each one of these with that final sentence.
Yes.
So you might, you might wanna keep it, but amend the language.
We can, we can leave that, I think we can leave that to you, Mr. Sumter, how to, how to?
Wordsmith, I think you can.
Wordsmith that.
Right, I will, I will incorporate the word feasible, if that's acceptable to you, and then try to make sure it stays consistently, formatted consistently in each response.
I just, I do wanna interject just a, a slightly different issue here, and that is that, um, I don't, since some, some of you were not on the board at the time that this was in place, um, it has been, it's, we were talking about it as an, as a successful program. I do wanna point out that there was a great deal of controversy in some, uh, parts of the community about the implementation of this program, and many, especially the Spanish-speaking Latino community, um, had some real, um, differences of opinion about this. I was disappointed in the, uh, grand jury report to note that it, or at least I did not find any mention of, uh, including parents and community members in their, um, groups from which they took feedback. Um, they specifically identified principals. Um, so, as we're talking about this being a successful program, I want us to keep in mind that it did, it wasn't perceived of as successful for all parts of the community.
And I would just add, because that certainly was true, and I, and I think it was really across the board, because I had parents of all types that were, um, very, that felt it was overkill to get that first letter from the DA. Um, but, uh, that's why I think it's really particularly important that we look at our own numbers, um, and see if that correlates with what the county grand jury saw, ties into whether or not it would be, uh, a financial benefit for us, you know, a good trade-off. Um, I, I appreciate Mr. Smith's point about the fact that so many of the, I mean, it's particularly a secondary issue, so many of the districts that have secondary students are basic aid and are, are not going to go for this, um, but it's something to explore.
And? Ms. Lamone?
I, I think, um, in line to what's been said, it might make sense to actually not bring this back in a board brief, but bring this back as an agenda item, to really think about how we're going to address this, because even if there is not the response that we want from the county or from the DA, um, there's a reason, besides the financial benefit, but there's a reason to really explore how we get our students in the classroom and keep them there. So, um, I would like to propose that we see this as an agenda item in the future.
Thank you, 'cause I was gonna make that exact point, that regardless of how we respond to the grand jury report, we need to address the issue of truancy in our schools somehow. So we, I would agree that I'd like to have this come back to us as a, as a board agenda item. Thank you.
Ms. Cordero?
Yes.
Um, I, I'm interested in having it come back as an item relating to attendance. Um, I'm, I'm a, I was here when the truancy program, I was the principal, I think you accurately, both you and Ms. Parker, reflect some of the issues related to its, uh, enforcement. And, uh, from my perspective, I would much rather have this framed as an attendance issue, not a truancy issue. I, I see truancy mostly connotes punishment, and attendance, I, I see that more as, uh, a magnet for getting kids to, to come to school and stay in school, and, and both Mr. Sumter and I are, are working on bringing forward an, an attendance program to increase our attendance, um, and to find ways to attract those students who might wander off our campuses for other reasons.
That's why we hired you, see? Keep us on track. Okay, so I, I fully agree with you, and, and I would imagine others do, too, um, so we can hopefully bring that back as an attendance?
Sure.
Issue. Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Can I move to approve the Santa Barbara Unified School District's response to the grand jury report? Where is the truancy program in Santa Barbara County as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five-zero. Item E4, Approval of Resolution 2011/2012-12, Authorizing Absent Board Members Compensation, Absent Board Member Compensation. Dr. Cash?
Well, I think this is pretty straightforward. The head code provides to the board member being paid for any meeting in which they are absent, if the board resolution is duly adopted and includes in its minutes the time of the meeting, that he or she was performing service outside of the meeting for the school district or districts on jury duty or ill, or the absence was due to hardship being acceptable by the board.
Okay, just for public information, I think, um, this, uh, is due to a fact that a special meeting was called during the time that two board members were out of town, and it would have constituted a great hardship for them to try to get back in order to attend the meeting. So, um, with that, I'll call for a motion. Mr. Herron?
I will abstain from the motion, this affects me.
Okay.
And, uh, I have hard time.
I will abstain as well.
Okay.
I would've liked to have been there, I'm sure we both would've, but, uh?
Love to have been there, but?
I was here the next day, and, and there was discussion about which day to have the meeting, and we can't always all be here on certain days when meetings are called at the last minute.
I will move to approve Resolution 2011/2012-12, Authorizing Absent Board Member Compensation.
And I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? And abstentions, I don't, the, abstentions or are they recusals? I'm not sure how we record them, but we have three, um, zero with two abstentions. Okay, so, item E5, Approval of Resolution 2011-2012-10, Emergency Resolution, Award of Contracts Without Bidding and Advertisement to Mitigate Mold and Airflow Requirements for Air Quality at Washington Elementary School. And, Mr. Hetjung is not here.
Mr. Carl Mayrose is here.
Oh, Mr. Mayrose, okay.
Carl, do you wanna come up, because I'm sure you're gonna have to come up sooner or later.
Hello, my name is Carl Mayrose, I'm the project manager for the secondary district, and I will answer whatever questions I can.
Why don't I, I frame this a little bit, and then I'll let you guys?
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Have at it with Carl. So what you have in front of you is, we operate under the Uniform Cost Accounting Method in the Public Contract Code, which gives us a higher dollar threshold in terms of what we have to bid competitively, and that's prescribed under the Public Contract Code. If we had not adopted the Uniform Cost Accounting Method, for work to be performed would be fifteen thousand dollars, and for materials and supplies, it's roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars right now. By board resolution, we increased that work-to-be-performed threshold to, I think it's a hundred-and-twenty-five or it's a hundred-and-thirty thousand, I can't believe, I can't remember where it is, but it's up in that neighborhood. So we develop a scope of work that looks at mitigating or remediating both mold and also addressing some of the HVAC units, but it's indeterminable in terms of what the cost might be. Public Contract Code requires you to advertise two consecutive weeks in a period not less than fourteen plus one day, and then have sealed bids submitted, and then have board approval. There are exceptions or waivers to this provision under the Public Contract Code. It used to be to permit the continuance of classes, as you can see, based on Mr. Hetjung's write-up, there's a Court of Appeals opinion that basically gives a, a little bit more stringent definition, but we believe that we meet that definition. So, now, if the board took a unanimous action to waive the competitive bid process, found it compelling enough to do that, and the county superintendent approved, we could move forward with, basically, waiving the competitive bid process and moving forward on an emergency basis to remediate these portables. So, having said that, I'll introduce Carl, and if you have any specific questions relative to the scope of work, I'm sure he's better equipped to address those than I.
We have one public comment, so we can go ahead, uh, Mr. Mayrose, I think we'll take the public comment, and then we'll probably call you back up?
Okay.
To answer our questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
David Shapiro?
Again, I'm David Shapiro, representing Peps, and again, I wanna start by thanking Dr. Cash for helping on this issue, too, 'cause this has been a particularly, uh, important one that Dr. Cash has put a lot of, I think, muscle power behind, and we appreciate that. As you all know, I've sent, or I should say, our group sent you, or we consulted with my group, and I sent it from my email address, a email that I want to be sure has entered into the record, you all have a copy of that. Um, we, uh, support the idea of using a no-bid contract, but we don't want the no-bid process to somehow be a excuse for not doing this properly. And while we appreciate the fact that Dr. Cash has moved things forward, we have some concern that this is not being done properly. We wanna make sure that in the rush to a no-bid, uh, process, that doesn't allow just anything to happen. There, there's two issues. There's the mold remediation and the ventilation. We wanna stress that the mold remediation is, is, this is based on EPA wording and based on our discussions with Cal OSHA, with a, with a supervisory industrial hygienist at Cal OSHA, um, uh, that all mold remediation has to be performed by an IIRC certified technician, and there's two different IIRC certifications, which I've given to you. And not only the technicians have to be certified, but there's a certain IIRC-established protocol called S520 that has to be established in this, that has to be, uh, followed in this situation. This is, again, based on EPA wording and, and Cal OSHA's interpretation, at least the person we spoke to at Cal, at Cal OSHA. So, we have the issue of the accreditation of the mold remediators and the protocol that they use. In terms of the HVAC systems, we're, uh, we're glad that five are gonna be addressed, but we're concerned why more than five can't be addressed. We don't see any difference structurally, or at least we would learn what the difference, what the other structural issues are, that DSA would have to get re-involved on, uh, number six through thirteen. So, um, uh, the more detailed, uh, level of concerns in this email, but we wanna make sure all of our questions in this email are addressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Board members, do you have questions for Mr. Mayrose? Ms. Parker? We're gonna keep you on your toes, Mr. Mayrose.
That's fine.
Um, Mr. Mayrose, if you could go ahead and just talk a little bit about the HVAC situation and the differences between the portables that some don't, won't need to go through the DSA process, hopefully, um, but some will.
Absolutely. I do wanna qualify my responses in that I'm not a person that has been coordinating this work, and I'm, so my knowledge is somewhat limited. But, um, essentially, I believe Dr. Shapiro mentioned there were five that are being addressed, and the rest are not being addressed during this project. The five that are being addressed, as I understand it, can be done without changing any structural components to the buildings. The remaining portables may require structural changes in order to adopt them, to adapt them to new units. So I know that our architect right now, Robert Robles' architecture, is looking at that, and we'll see what we need to do to make those changes.
Is that simply because those are different portables, that they're not, the portables aren't all the same, different manufacturers, different?
Yeah, they're different manufacturers. Uh, I don't know if they all have the same, uh, vintage or manufacturer of HVAC units on them now, but I do know that we have more than one type of manufacturer in our warehouse of portables on this district, in this district.
I, I might be able to fill in a, a little bit of the gaps here. Robert Robles, who's the architect, project architect, he sent an email today that essentially said that what Carl's saying is, basically, we're looking at swapping out bards for bards when you have like-size, like-type penetrations, that do otherwise might trigger a seismic upgrade of those portables, in the event that DSA and DSA's broad, with their discretion, determines that we've affected the seismic calculations by greater than ten percent. And I think the board's aware that DSA, um, anytime you have an approval on any type of DSA building, in the event that DSA determines that you've triggered a seismic upgrade, it's swept up and has to be upgraded to current code. So, meaning you can have a building that's perfectly fine, was approved twenty years ago, it's by DSA, as long as you don't touch that building, the DSA approval remains valid. Once you start modifying it, DSA will basically make you bring that up to current code, whatever that might entail, in terms of structural reinforcement.
Mr. Herron?
A follow-up on that, um, say we went ahead and did something without DSA approval, only to find out, six months from now, that we should've gotten DSA approval, who is liable for that decision?
The governing board members have personal liability.
That's me.
That's correct. And if you've ever received, I, I think you all know, I was a director of facilities in, in a past life a long time ago, whenever you get that nasty gram from DSA that says, "Please discuss with your legal counsel regarding your board member's personal liability," that's not a letter you wanna get, because they will send you those letters, because interestingly enough, it takes DSA a long time to close out a project, and there's a whole bunch of reports, not just filed by the district, but are filed by the general contractor, and your testing labs, and your DSA inspector, and they don't consider the project completely closed out until that's all in the file. So a way of kind of scaring you into getting all that documentation together is basically to send you those letters, because you don't wanna have to take that to your board and say, "Hey, you know, you're personally liable." So that's kind of the incentive they use to get things done.
Do we have any change in the time element that's gonna take to go through the process for the other seven or eight portables? If we, if we get approval, if we, if we determine we can do five, and there's still, what, seven left? Is there a timeframe? Are we still talking a year from now?
I, I'll let Carl address that. I think what we wanna do first is, we want to make sure that if we can swap out the bard unit for a bard unit, that we have enough outside air exchange as a pilot before we do the other four. With respect to the remainders that aren't in this category, I think the project architect is still kinda re-evaluating how fast we can do this, and, and they're all gonna be, we don't have a cookie-cutter, uniform batch of portables, they all have their, you know, various idiosyncrasies, so they'll all be in a different boat, is what I would imagine.
One of the issues in response to that question that I wanna make clear is that, what I, what we don't wanna do is exchange those bard units with new bard units, using the same aperture, and have it not produce the quality of air that's gonna be essential for, for, for the occupants of the room. So, that's a concern that was raised as a result of conversations we had with other district facilities, people who have engaged in this process, is that you may need to be careful that you don't actually, because you haven't structurally changed the opening, make, and may actually increase the airflow. So for us, we, we were fairly confident that the new equipment is going to do that, but we don't wanna just do it wholesale in the classrooms and end up with the same issue facing us after we've completed that task. So we're gonna do a process which will allow us to install, test, to ensure that that's what we wanna do, and then get the rest of them done, and that my commitment to this community and to this board is that we process whatever one's required as DSA approval as quickly as possible, and when it's approved, we install.
In the board brief, there was a, a list of all the things that are being done immediately. A lot of those items related to the existing units being cleaned, um, automatic somethings put on them, I mean, a lot of things were being done to the existing ones. Will, will those things make it even, make it better if we have to use them when school starts?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Um, and my final question is just on the mold remediator, the mold remediation company that we're using, do you, uh, could you speak to their qualifications?
I don't have their qualifications with me tonight. Uh, we have used them for years, uh, in the district. To my, to my understanding, they're qualified, but I, I can't address it directly tonight.
Ms. Lamone?
And my question is tor, uh, more about timeline. If this is approved, um, and it sounds like it needs to be approved unanimously?
Yes.
Um, to move forward, what is the timeline? What can the community expect as of tomorrow or next week? What things are going to actually change?
Well, we'll begin immediately.
By immedi, if I may?
Yeah, Carl probably has a timeline.
By immediately, as soon as the votes pass, I'm placing a phone call. Uh, we've already got the crews reserved, and they'll be in there tomorrow morning.
I, I think a better way to look at that is, by not approving it, you're adding three- weeks to the timeline. Because you're talking about not only advertising, you're talking about agendas, maybe even four weeks.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I'd like to make it clear that there's two things involved. One is the emergency to do something. And that is not, we're not doing that in any way, shape, or form to go out and get the fastest, quickest, easiest
No.
Least qualified person. So, I want to make it clear, the vote for this is to do it fast. But the follow-up question I have is, I was under the impression that Panacea was doing the follow-up to the remediation.
So was I. They will.
Okay, that, because this is, the one we have in front of us is
They'll pass it all the post-test.
Yeah, the one we have in front of us, and it spends a lot of time saying why we're better than Panacea, or why we're different than Panacea, and that just adds more problems to the equation.
We communicated directly with Panacea today, and so they'll be involved in all the subsequent testing.
All the subsequent testing, so. And is this the same company doing remediation that we used in the past where we found problems with what they did?
I'm not aware of any problems that we've had in the past with this company.
Did they remediate the library?
At which school?
At Washington?
I don't know.
Because we had remediation at the library, only to find out, and they told us it was okay to use, only find out that there was still
Who is this company?
Channel Coast Corporation.
No, I believe ZenCo did the remediation.
Okay. So, this is a different company?
Yes.
And we will test them, or follow up to make sure they have the credentials that they need to do this?
Have we already followed, I've seen we've already checked to make sure they have the credentials?
Yes. There is a question as to whether or not they have to have the credentials as requested by Dr. Shapiro, or whether they need to have the credentials to be a qualified mold remediator.
Okay.
What is the process to get a document put into the record, as was requested for this document? Does it take a motion to accept this as for the record, or does it, where does it go? How does it get into the record?
It would be included as part of the minutes.
Our minutes are never, have this kind of stuff attached to them or in them.
Well, it's the same as any letter. I mean, we often get letters and so forth. There's nothing, there's nothing that goes on the website, for example. We can officially accept it if you want to as part of the record, but it's the same as any public comment.
Well, but we have a specific request that'd be part of the record, so that down the road, it's, it is, so. It just seems that we should have some formal way to make something of the record, if that's our intent. I'm not saying that's our intent, but if it was our intent, to make something more official than just to be, leave this meeting and not see the latter day again.
Well, we could perhaps have a motion that it go, that it be kept as a public record as part of the district files?
We could certainly do that. I think, I think most of the letters that we get are kept
Just make it official?
Some way, but we can make it official that it's kept as part of the public files. Do we have a motion for the approval to begin? First of all.
Madam President, I'm just going to say at this point, because of a business relationship with one of the interested parties, I'm going to be recusing myself on this item.
Okay.
So, I will move to approve Resolution 2011 slash 2012 dash 10, emergency resolution, award of contracts without bidding and advertisement to mitigate mold and airflow requirements for air quality at Washington Elementary School, and I will ask that the email from Dr. Shapiro be kept in the district records.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries four zero with one abstention. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayrose. Okay. So, we will look forward to having more updates on that as we go forward. We will.
I've directed the principal at Washington Elementary School to meet with, I don't know if it's the entire group tomorrow, Dr. Shapiro, aren't you meeting with Mr. Barnett?
Just the two of us.
Oh, okay. Just to provide them with a timeline and update of all the information that we have more detail that was discussed this evening.
Okay, great. Well, then we will move on to the conference agenda. Our, we begin with F1, the first reading of the initial successor proposal to open 2011 to 2014 negotiations with Santa Barbara California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 37. And, Mr. Smith, I think you are presenting this one.
Thank you, Madam President. We have the entire contract open with CSEA. The existing contract expired as of June 30 of 2011. This is their initial proposal. We're presenting it to you for first reading. In accordance with the RADA Act, we'll be bringing it back at the next agenda, a board agenda for second reading. We will also be developing our initial proposal and bringing it back to the board for its consideration the first meeting in September. So, we're asking you for a first reading, and if you have any questions or comments, we'd be more than happy to hear them.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No, it was pretty straightforward. So, absent any other comment, I'm willing to go ahead and make a motion. I'm sorry, this is
Conference agenda, yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Don't have to make a motion until next time.
Yeah.
Got it.
It'll come back to us again. Okay, so then we can move on to item F2, update on special education action plan.
Good evening. The last time I updated you with the action plan was last November, 2010. So, you may recall, you got that in a board brief, and then I followed up at a board meeting and gave you an update after our stakeholders' meeting. So, I have completely redone the action plan. I've evaluated every single one of the 153 objectives, and so everything that you see is new. The left-hand side is the FICMAT language, so I did not change that. So, that's the original document. The right-hand side is the updated evidence and the percentage, which I did change. Quick explanation, you probably figured this out, but just a quick explanation about how we figured the percentages, percentages out. And I do want to thank Dr. Carol Miller, who, from the beginning, way before I was here, met with the FICMAT team and got us started out, and has continued to be a consultant on this, so I do thank her for her work as well. So, very quickly on the percentages, there are four major goal areas. Each goal area has a number of actions under that. The components within each action are averaged to determine the percentage for each of the actions. And then, under that, the actions for each of those goal areas are averaged to equal the goal area percentage. Okay, I know that I have a very brief amount of time, so I'm going to try and give you a quick overview of all of the objectives, and then you can ask me any questions that you might have. So, goal number one, improve communication and information structures. I calculated that at 92.9%. I will tell you that I went through each objective, and I either rated it up or down, so some of them went down. If I added additional areas that I thought we needed to add under those sections, then I rated us down, because we're not quite there. So, quickly, one of the areas under that is our website. And just to point out a couple of the new things that are on our website, we have an updated organizational chart for our department. That is in English and in Spanish. And I am thrilled to have just about a complete staff. For the first time since I've been here, I think we have just about a complete staff. So, I'm just thrilled to have Deb Lozari join us, and Kirsten Escobedo still with us. So, this is great. We have a brand-new program specialist, Stacy Tolkin, and so I'm just thrilled with our team. Also, we have updated directory information that's in English and in Spanish. We have a new document, roles and responsibilities. I sent that forward last year. I completely redid it, so it's completely new, and basically, it shows what each of our jobs are, who to call for what, and that type of thing, so that is now posted on the website. That is a draft, so we may continue to re, you know, revamp, add things, take things away, and so on, but that is a work in progress. We do need to still translate that in Spanish, so there are still things that we are still working on the translation. It takes quite a lot of time to translate these documents, so that is on our agenda to be done. On SACE, on accountability, I think we are pretty much 100% on our SACE. We had our self-review, which went really well. Our procedural manuals for both certificated and classified are completed there on the Intranet, as you know. Let's see, one of the objectives that was identified was a resource library. We have ordered materials, but it was, this was not a FICMAT objective. This was a stakeholder's request, so I just wanted to point that out. I will be ordering books for the district office that will be available on a checkout basis, but I have not ordered books for every single site, as that would be so expensive. So, under communication, very quickly, we have the roles and responsibilities document. We have the procedural handbooks. We have tons of job-alike meetings that I've mentioned before and given you schedules, and we can provide those for you again for each job-alike group. We have our professional development day coming up for all certificated special ed staff on August 23rd. Invite any of you to join us if you'd like. We have Rick Lemmons coming as our speaker, our featured speaker that day. He'll be talking about inclusion, and he'll be talking about modifying the core curriculum to meet diverse student needs. Let's see, we have another objective that, again, is not a FICMAT priority, but was identified by a stakeholder subgroup. That was a centralized communication system. We did not purchase a centralized communication system. We did not find that that would be an expense that was worthwhile. The staff does make every attempt to return calls within 24 hours. Sometimes, we're not available to do that, but we do have our secretary call and say when the person will receive a phone call back. Let's see, we've had our district special ed parent advisory committees start last year. We started out with a bang. We had a representative from every site, kind of hit and miss during the year for those representatives, so we had about, maybe 10 representatives, 10 schools represented during the year. We continued to meet. We're continuing to meet next year. One of the new things that we're planning, and it's for all parents, we thought we would have a couple of presentations for all parents of special ed students, and this would be a big, big presentation where all parents would be invited and not just the representatives. So, that is going to happen. We have our first presentation actually scheduled. It will be October 12th, and again, it'll be Rick Lemmons. We'll be talking with our parents. Let's see.
Can I, can I just ask you a quick question?
Certainly.
Will that meeting be conducted in English and Spanish?
Yes. We will have an interpreter available.
Great, thank you.
Yes. More on communication, we have, obviously, the board meeting presentations. We have articles in e-news, and we will be increasing our articles in e-news this coming year. And we're continuing to look for ways that we know we need to increase our communication with parents in general, so that will be an area that we're going to be addressing this year. Let's see, goal two, very quickly, on improved professional development training. We had 93.1%. I think we've worked very hard on professional development and training. You can see, one of our past board presentations was the professional development plan, and you can see that that was very extensive as to all of the offerings we provided this past year. We have lots of continued plans for staff development coming up. We have lots of job-alike meetings that I've already discussed, and we have a lot of information passed out at those job-alike meetings. Goal three, provide effective programs and services. Thank you, Susan, for continuing to be on the program and services committee, and we met four times last year. This was a committee that the stakeholders opted to have continue, so we have continued. We have targeted our funds this school year to provide extensive assistive technology and specialized curriculum for our students, so that will be coming. We are ordering quickly. Our funds are up on September 30th, so we will be providing lots of materials to the sites. One reason I rated us down is because we have a new mental health funding issue that we need to address, and that's not just for us, that's for, you know, for the entire state. I am on the interagency committee to address that, and we will be looking at increased programmatic improvement for our CTE classes, improved mental health services, where we can have more control over those funds and more control over those services. So, that is up and coming, and so it did require us to do more on that. Some of the new positions that came out of this, I'm really happy about. We added an interpreter translator to our staff, and she's part-time. She's only four hours a day, but she's busy, busy, busy translating our documents, our IEPs, our assessments. She's also been helping me translate various things for our website, and she certainly is busy and doesn't have enough hours in the day, but this has been a great addition to our staff. We've had additional services added for behavior specialists through the SELPA and through consultants. We've paid for that through Medi-Cal funds. We are adding, and thank you for approving it, a floating LVN for travel to all of our sites as needed for medical procedures. That person will be supervised by one of our school nurses. And we've also added, again, thank you for approving that, the bilingual speech aid, and that will be very helpful for our speech therapists to have bilingual assessments. So, let's see, last goal, goal four, provide effective organizational structure. We have a 90.6. We've worked very hard on that. We have roles and responsibilities chart, organizational chart. We've sent memos to principals regarding things that we'd like them to do, carry out regarding the FICMAT plan. Discussions at administrative meetings. I'd like to call on one of my guests, Ms. Barbara Kiani. She's worked really hard on welcome signs in all languages, so I asked her tonight to come and share with us. We've made the welcome signs for each site, so they are out. You want to speak? You want me to hold it up with you?
Sure.
I could be vanna.
Okay. I'm glad you can go up there. Okay. Let's see, we may want to get out of sight.
It's so little that I'm too tall.
Okay. Okay. These are the signs that are up at every campus now. We, what we did in the course of developing these was to look at the languages that are spoken in our school, and you'll see Russian, you'll see English, French, German. Down on the bottom, you'll see Chumash word for welcome, as well as Spanish, and sign like, the sign, in sign language and in Braille as well. You'll see them, in fact, I was over at Santa Barbara High School, and right over the opening, you know, as you're approaching from the flagpole, right over the front doors, it's already mounted there, but they're in offices, they're, they're all over already. So, it was part of the FICMAT report and one that we've gotten positive response back on, so just, we wanted to make sure that you saw it. Okay?
Thank you. Okay, so continuing on organizational structure, we have lots of collaboration between department directors. We have great discussions at cabinet and at educational services meetings. And again, we have our procedural handbooks for organizational structure. So, I plan to follow up with our stakeholders. I said I would keep them posted, so I will email out to the stakeholders the updated action plan for them to see, and we will be posting it on the web as well. And so, I entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. I believe we have one public comment, so I think we'll hear from the public, and then we may have questions for you. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Good afternoon. I- you had an update on a special education plan. I have an update for you of my special education plan situation with my student. My name is Lourdes Uribe, and I welcome David Cash to be our superintendent. My daughter was a student at Dos Pueblos High School the year before you left us. And I can honestly say that I'm excited to have you as a superintendent. Last April, we had to make a decision that we hold for almost 15, 20 years, to hire an attorney to represent my student at Dos Pueblos High School who was failing classes. His sin was that he wanted to do AP classes, being a severely dyslexic student. And he failed, he was failing, and he was getting depressed and everything. Through our negotiations with an attorney, and after thousands of dollars on my end, having no way of knowing, you know, what the district is paying, I'm here to report that it is not a road that any parent would like to take, or I will recommend that anybody take. It's a lot of money, and it doesn't get us anywhere. The reason mainly that I'm here, my husband wanted to be here with me, but he's not in good health today. And the reason why I'm here today is because the last thing that I hear that I would like to clarify to the ladies of the Board of Education and to Mr. Herron, with all my respect, Christian's attorney said that the district won't pay a number, amount of dollars. I don't remember, and I don't care the amount, you know, to me, to go and spend it or do something with it. I'm here to report that I found that extremely distressful and sad. And I'm here to tell you that I'm a parent, you know, who cares deeply for the education of his children and all childrens in our district. And I would have never, you know, come, you know, to the schools if my son would have not been, you know, extremely suffer in our wonderful Dos Pueblos High School that we like. His things were stolen.
30 seconds.
His teachers weren't understanding his learning style, and he suffered tremendously last year. And I felt that I had no choice but to hire an attorney. And I will hope that we'll come to a resolution. I don't know from where, you know, this comment came from, that you won't pay for me to go and spend money. That's not nice, and that's not something that I would like to hear, you know, from the district. Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments for Dr. Mills? Ms. Limone?
So first off, Dr. Mills, I'd like to thank you for the incredible effort. And when I read this, I really think of, part of the work you're doing is changing the culture. And changing the culture is much harder to do than changing, making any programmatic changes. So I really commend your entire team, because it's a lot of work. And as I was reading this, I thought, wow, we've made a lot of progress. And one of the things that comes to mind, and it's actually not something that I think you can address right now, but is really, how do we measure effectiveness? I see that we have evidence of completion, but what about evidence of effectiveness? And it can be measured, I mean, in a number of ways, number of attendance going up, saving money, concerns going down, you name it. I mean, there's like a series of things. And I would love to just not see it next to every single comment, but just maybe, whether it's your team or the stakeholders, just think a little bit, because I think it would help me. I see that we're completing a lot, we're doing a lot. And the next question I have is, how do we know that it's working? How do we know that it's effective? And how are we measuring it? So I appreciate all the work, and I'm hoping that next time, which will probably be in another six months or so, that there's just a little bit of information that can help me think through that. So, thank you.
Other board members? Mr. Herron?
Yes, thank you. The effort that went into this this summer is tremendous. I know that very well. And my concern is the same as Ms. Limone's, is it looks wonderful. But until we hear feedback that it's, everything's going great, and everything's on schedule, and tremendous results, we won't know if the words on these documents, you know, really mean anything. So at some point, again, it might be down the road, you know, we- just an example. I know you put on a great list of professional courses to take.
Yes.
But there was nothing as to who took advantage of them, how many of our staff did. And we can have a great array of courses, but if the staff doesn't participate, then the array of courses wasn't effective. And so maybe even something like that. Hey, we offered these 100 courses, and here's the number of people on our staff that partook in these courses. Some type of documented evidence that what we're doing on paper is producing results in the classroom to our students, to our parents. Because the last thing we want to do is have a group of parents come in and say, it's not working. And I haven't heard that at all from anybody, which is fantastic. The difference between now and three years ago is absolutely unbelievable. So I want to keep it that way. And so anything you can do to keep us appraised and that things are going well would be appreciated.
Yes, I actually did look, when I was doing the professional development plan, I was trying to determine budget figures, and I was trying to determine exactly what you were asking with regard to staff attendance. And it was, you know, they were offered by so many different places, SELPA, you know, us, workshops, different budget codes. It was really, really hard. We tried to get that data, and we could certainly try again, but it was, it was a challenge.
Ms. Parker?
Just to follow up with that, I think it actually would be really interesting to come, for us to see some sort of metric that your team creates that includes, because I know you do a staff morale survey, but maybe a staff survey on classroom effectiveness, a parent survey on classroom effectiveness as part of that. I could see it including things like, where are we in relationship to lawsuits now and in the future compared to in the past? And, you know, CDE referrals and things like that. There are many things that I think you could think of to put together that would show us that FICMAT was pointing us in the right direction. I mean, it's ultimately, we're implementing the FICMAT report. It's ultimately a reflection on the quality of their recommendations as to whether or not this is effective. One question I had on the mental health piece, will the district get as much money? I mean, so this is the state changing who's responsible for mental health interventions essentially for students. It used to be the county, it has been the county, it's switching to the district. Will the district get as much money as the county did? Is that an equivalent transfer over so that we can provide the same level of services or better, hopefully?
Yes, actually, I do have a document from the SELPA with exact figures, but I don't have that with me. The money used to go to mental health, you know, county mental health for the services, not the county office, but to county mental health. Now, the money will be flowing through the SELPA. So we have to determine how to provide those services and how to spend those funds. We're actually going to be getting an increase in funds. So that's great. And so we have, Dr. Jerez Butterfield, our SELPA director, is trying to come up with some options for districts to weigh in and see what they want to do. So one of those options is for districts to get all the funds and provide the services ourselves and hire staff ourselves, and have a process for determining what students, which students need mental health services, which personally I would like to do. There's all kinds of things we can do with those funds, such as hire our own behavior specialist, hire our own person to provide social skills training, to provide clinical services for kids to an increased amount, I would think. We've had a lot of denials in the past through Department of Mental Health, and I think that we could provide excellent services in our own district. So that's one option. Another option is to continue to contract with Department of Mental Health, so that is yet another, that is an option. Another option is for the SELPA to hire staff and for the SELPA to provide services, and the district would contract with the SELPA for those services.
I was just going to echo what Ms. Parker had mentioned, which is, and Ms. Limone, I think it would be helpful to have some sort of effectiveness measures that maybe just, you know, 10, or I don't know what the optimal number would be. But where we could get some sort of baseline and then comparison in order to determine whether what we're doing is having the desired effect. And also, to make sure, to include, it could even be something as simple as like SurveyMonkey, to go out to parents to get a sense of, maybe not as detailed as some of the surveys that we've done with staff, but a sense of whether they're feeling more comfortable, more confident with what's going on with special ed. Because one of the things that I think, I want to also echo what Mr. Herron said. Three years ago, this report would have been so different than it is now. And I really want to compliment you and your staff on bringing us to the point where we are, where we are now. So I'd really like to get a sense of whether the parents are feeling that as well. And anecdotally, I think they are, but it would be nice to have some data to show that, so.
Okay.
Ms. Deacon, did you want to make a comment as well?
I would like to. And I echo what my fellow board members have said. It may be difficult to get to compare to baseline data, because we weren't necessarily collecting it earlier in terms of X number of complaints and things like that. But certainly, your phone logs that you're tracking about returned phone calls would be a place. The resource library is of interest, because you could also monitor the utilization of that. I'm a little concerned about not having it at the sites, and I understand the problem with funding that. I'm wondering, will you be providing lists of those resources to the sites so that if a teacher had a parent they knew might be interested in a given resource?
Yes, we'll put that on the website as to what we have and what's available to check out.
Okay. And maybe we could even get those resources out to the sites if a teacher called and said, I have a parent who's really interested in this, and it might be difficult for them to travel to the district office.
Oh, sure, yeah, we could send it out.
Because I would think utilization of that would also indicate some good things. I was a little concerned about the DLEC entry, just because it said, DLEC has targeted issues not related to special ed. And I was wondering if we couldn't still reach out to them and provide some presentations to them, even if it doesn't fall within the parameters of their issues. Ms. Swawsky?
I just want to speak briefly about that, because I talked to Carrie, or Dr. Mills, about this. DLEC, like ELAC, has a very prescribed legal responsibility and roles, and it's not about presenting those kinds of things. What you can do, though, is, in conjunction with a regular official DLEC meeting, you can have more parents or add presentations, education, other kinds of things. And that's what happens, you know, at the site. So they'll have an ELAC meeting with their representatives, they'll get their work done, and then they have another kind of parent type of program, often kids are involved and all. So that's the kind of thing that I think, we need to be careful that we're-
Okay, oh, I understand. But that's a great group of opinion leaders, and if we can access them and have them spread the word about resources and issues, I think that's a good idea.
If I could at some point, after you're finished, I want to make a comment.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to end up by saying, I know how tenacious you are, Dr. Mills, about finding the right staff. And I'm really-
My reputation precedes me.
Yes, but I'm glad you are, because I think you've put together a really good team. And I've actually already heard from the sites, really positive feedback about Deborah Lazari. And this is early in her tenure, so that's great news. And so I'm really hopeful, and I think we've got some good ideas here to pass along to you. But I think you've been doing great work, and I know this was a lot of work to put together. And I don't want you to spend all your time just, you know, tracking FICMAT items. And so I want to release you from some of the burden of that, so that you can do the work at hand, which is working with the students. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Swawsky?
That was like the perfect segue. We didn't talk. What my comment was going to be, in reviewing all of this and working with Dr. Mills over time, I think we both agree that this whole process has been really instrumental and has served our district well in, you know, improving the program. I mean, the whole thing, even the stakeholders group was difficult and challenging, and it created, you know, a venue where lots of people got there and put in, the action plan was developed there. At this point, we've been going quite a while now with improvement. When I review all of these, and I think you might have seen this, noticed this too, the 100% ones, of course, were the ones where there's a product or something, it got done, and it was meant to be that way. The ones who, the ones that aren't, and literally in each one of those categories, those big categories, communication, professional development program, and the organizational piece, they will never be 100%. And the time it took Dr. Miller and Dr. Mills to actually figure out the percentages and, you know, create this whole thing and revise it, I think it was well worth it this time. My concern is the time it took to do that. And so I'm just going to offer a comment and a consideration by the board that we maybe look at pulling those four big items again, because they are part of every single program that we run. And we collect data on a lot of that. Make, I loved what you were talking about with collecting all these different kinds of data and building that into kind of an ongoing improvement plan that, you know, we can use in other departments as well. But maybe shift away from these 100% ones, not having to do this big bulky thing all the time, and get exact percentages. I think the data, the percentages on that is going to be much more important. Get some baseline, and then just continue collecting in those big areas. So I would like to see something like that come forward, so that we aren't spending a lot of time just tracking the percentages on this. Anyway, thank you.
Well, I would certainly agree with that. I think in many areas, the percentage becomes sort of misleading and in some ways even meaningless because of how it shifts. So the fact that it goes up or down doesn't necessarily tell us whether we're improving or not. And so it becomes a little bit misleading. So I'm wholeheartedly in favor of sort of moving away from the percentages and just getting the update on the actions and progress. And I'm kind of noting from my fellow board members some nods here, so I think we can safely move in that direction. Okay? Okay, any, Ms. Herron?
Just two questions. I notice you have a training for the aides coming up before school starts.
Yes, yes.
Number one, can you just chat about that for a second? And also reassure us that we have aides and we'll be ready to go first day of school?
Yes, because last year, I think we had close to 100%, and that is my goal again. I like to have 100%. So we've been working very closely with Ann and Elaine on staffing, both certificated and classified. We've been in interview panels most every day, trying to fill those positions with great staff. And so I know that our two directors will say, oh, my God, Carrie, you know, lighten up, because I will not, you know, settle. I will continue to look for that great staff. But anyway, we are, I think that we will be 100% full by the time school starts. And I can certainly come back and give you a report on that. With regard to the training for instructional assistants, we did plan that, as we did last year, on the day that they come in prior to school opening. This will be on behavior intervention. It will be provided by one of our leading consultants, STAR, that is a non-public agency. And we contract with them to provide some assistance for some really complicated cases, and they're just excellent. So they're going to be having a morning session and an afternoon session, one for elementary, one for secondary. It'll be a three-hour training each. They will be going over general behavior management principles and as well as, you know, if you are an instructional assistant, what is your role? If you're a one-on-one instructional assistant, what is your role? Data collection, generalization of skills, fading procedures for not having an aide for the rest of their lives. How do you determine, based on data, when the student is ready to have some periods of time where they might not- time where they might not have direct intervention or some fading? So that will be the focus, and it's certainly in three hours that will not be mastered, but it will at least give them a good start. And then we have three schools that are actually not on the traditional calendar, that we're going to be providing a separate training for those schools for, with the same consultants.
Thank you, it sounds fantastic.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. We appreciate your report, and we look forward to further updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our break. I, we will take a 10-minute break. I do want to remind the board that we have a number of items to come back to at the end of the agenda that were pulled from our consent agenda, so we'll take a 10-minute break, and we will resume right on time.